Resolution 2801 about two months or so ago for the fiber internet and wifi for the An Street Village facility. Turns out, we were approved twice for two different grants. So, we used a larger grant to get additional years of service out of the project, and I got the okay from the state to change the scope of this grant to allow us to instead use the money to provide training for job services, computer tech technology training, office tech training to the residents of An Street Village. So, we worked out a deal with Warwick Community College. We'll be taking the residents to Warwick. They're going to be getting training in all manner of different tech technology and office productivity pieces, also working with them on their job training, their job training and job services to help find better employment. And then, with the amount of money we're anticipating being able to do between 52 and 73 residents trainings, there are two and a half to three-hour sessions for six sessions for each batch. So, we've got the ability to train a lot of people. Or, they also offer advanced training, so if somebody's really, really good at it, picks something up really quickly. We're getting pre- and post-analysis of all the different residents out there, so we can kind of fine-tune. Well, HCD can then fine-tune who has access to what services out there. The idea is to hopefully provide the residents with as much knowledge, as much information as they can in order to better their employment options.
Any questions or comments from the council?
This is just fantastic. It's fantastic. It opens up a whole new world for people, you know, giving people training, opportunities for employment. This is fantastic.
Good job.
A bigger career for one, too.
And I think we're very lucky to get this much money, that we can apply it to other places than the initial intention.
And we're very lucky to have people like you that apply for these grants, too.
Thank you.
And it goes right to our citizens, right back to the town. That's great.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes, we do.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next up is a Maryland Folk Festival sponsorship, and we have ABCD Director Alan Swager, and Caroline O'Hare, the Caroline.
How's everybody doing?
How are you doing today?
We're great. So, as you all know, we've been working diligently to prepare for the Maryland Folk Festival, pretty much since the conclusion of the National Folk Festival this year. And a significant partnership that we wanted to maintain was our work with the Maryland State Art Council, and specifically to their support of the Maryland Folklife Traditions area, which, if you've experienced that before, it's a big significant piece of this event. It's about a third of the festival with the entertainment demonstrators that we have. We were very fortunate that they've come back on board to support us at the tune of $150,000 sponsorship for this year. I don't need to go over the details of the budget with you, but that's big. And we're very appreciative of it, so we come to you with the right to accept that sponsorship.
What do you think?
Who turns down money?
I don't know about that. That's crazy fantastic.
I don't know. Let's just thank the people.
This is now the official Maryland Folk Festival. We moved from where it was in Baltimore for many years. So, we are now the host of that, the state, so gladly accept $150,000.
Yes, this is a round of applause.
And thank you to Alan for securing that amount. That was fantastic.
Yes, really is.
Looking forward to this September, so.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Do we have consensus?
Absolutely.
Just want to remind folks that they still need to volunteer for the Bucket Brigade.
Yes.
Yes.
Please volunteer for the Bucket Brigade. We are rolling out artist announcements over and over the next three weeks, and then the next big push will be for our volunteers again. So, if you're interested in volunteering, go to mdfolkfest.com and click on Volunteer, and you'll find a lot of different ways you can help out the festival.
Bucket Brigade is the most one.
That is the most one.
Well, thank you both again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have a budget amendment to purchase portable radios. Chief Tall.
Good afternoon. How's everyone?
Just fine.
Good. Before you is a budget ordinance that does a couple things. This ordinance was prepared by Keith Corddry. And so, what this does is it cancels a previous appropriation of $805,000 for the Computer-Aided Dispatch Project that was part of the FY24 bond proceeds. And it also takes $185,000 that was in a PEGO account and real allocates those funds. So, $145,000 of that PEGO money will be reallocated to the fire department to allow us to continue the purchase of our portable radio replacement. And then, the remaining $40,000 will go back into general surplus.
So, the Computer Aid Dispatch Project was canceled?
I don't know the status.
I believe it was shelved.
Any questions or comments?
None.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our Vision Zero presentation, and it's Transportation
Manager Will White. How are you doing, sir?
Good. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good. And you?
Good. All right. Per the resolution that established for Vision Zero as a city policy, we are required to come to you or submit a report to council every year before June 30th. We submitted it. We just had trouble getting it into the city council session for presentation. So, we'll be doing that this evening. I do want to point out that Representative of the city's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisor Committee is here, representing them as they were instrumental in advancing Vision Zero from the beginning.
Thank you.
This is Alex McCray, by the way, as a representative for BPAC. Sorry, I should have loaded that. Salisbury's Vision Zero Program, so a brief overview. The things you're seeing here on the screen, so that top left image is the original action plan that is available on our website. Top right and bottom left images are the two previous annual reports, also available on our website. The bottom right with the green background is the newest report. That is where you're seeing this data, or this data that you're seeing tonight comes from that. That will be available on our website tomorrow. We wanted to present it to you before we posted it. Brief background. Mission in, Vision Zero is the city's mission to end traffic fatalities and serious injuries by January 1st, 2030. We did start our discussions in January 2018 internally, and had our interdepartmental coordination and meetings with BPAC in May 2018, went through the whole gathering data and authoring of the plan internally through 2019. And then, we presented to you, and it was officially adopted in 2020 in preparation for FY21. And then, those are our dates that the annual reports were adopted. Vision Zero is, and this is straight out of the Vision Zero Network's website, it is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. It has been implemented worldwide since 1990s and in the U.S. since 2014. It is a recognized way internationally to improve safety on our roads. In short, brief description, Vision Zero is a proactive program that targets known crash hotspots and locations similar to those hotspots to prevent crashes before they happen rather than reacting after the fact. The city selects our countermeasures, and we identify our locations designed to protect even the most vulnerable users. So, we go prioritize children, pedestrians, bicyclists, the disabled, and transit users, and then everything else kind of falls into a logical order after that. As one example of our project, you guys are all probably familiar, is the High Street. So, this is kind of a beginning to end when we took out a slip lane on High Street where it splits off into North Division Street. So, all the way to the left, you can see what it looked like before. The middle is what it looked like immediately after construction, and then to the right is what it looks like now landscaped and beautified a few years later. Salisbury is actually nationally recognized as a leader amongst small cities for Vision Zero planning and implementation. We've been invited to speak at numerous conferences. I've actually lost track, and we have another one on Thursday at SU we're speaking at. Crashes are going up nationally and in the state. We are bucking the trend, which not many places are doing, even New York City, which was the first Vision Zero city in the country. They are also struggling to keep their crashes down right now. So, we are leading even amongst other Vision Zero entities. Last year, 42,795 people died on the nation's roadways, which is a dramatic increase since the early 2000s. In Maryland, over 500 people die annually. Of these, about 150 of those are what's called BRUs. That's the vulnerable road users I described a few minutes ago. They're an extremely disproportionate amount considering the smaller volumes of travel. So, even though they don't make up the majority of fatalities, the fact that the modes that they travel, because they're only about, combined, they're only about 10% of modes, the fact that they're making up 20, 25, 30% of fatalities is extremely concerning. In Wycomico in 2021, there were 12 fatalities, four of which those were vulnerable road users. In Salisbury, on our city-owned streets for the last two years, we have had zero. All right. We were having between one and two annually before Vision Zero was implemented, and our total number of injurious crashes are down 19% in the last three years. We targeted our most dangerous streets early on with spot improvements, but our work is not yet done. We are continuing to implement low-cost improvements that are network-wide over known hotspots and similar locations. Vision Zero is beyond just us, as I described earlier. As of about two years ago now, Maryland has adopted Vision Zero as well for the policy of her state highway, and they are actively writing their Vision Zero plan as we speak. And then, USDOT, U.S. Department of Transportation, has adopted the Safe System Approach, which follows the Vision Zero tenants. They just call it something different. And these are the logos for the two entities, Maryland on the left and USDOT on the right. Vision Zero is heavily focused on data, so this is right out of our original Vision Zero plan, just kind of a rehash of the data. These are our high-injury network streets and intersections. And when we initially did the study, fatal crashes were occurring on just 2% of our streets, city-owned streets. Nearly 50% of our serious injuries were on 6.4 of our streets, all of which were very similar to each other. And then, 37.8% of our PED crashes were occurring on five streets, while almost a quarter of our bike crashes were occurring on three streets. Those are the streets we targeted first, and we have been working on consistently to reduce risk and improve safety. Just a quick rehash of the goals that are in the plan. Projects that have been implemented since the Vision Zero was adopted. The Riverside Circle Roundabout was accelerated upon the adoption of the program as it was one of our worst crash locations. Planned bikeway projects were reprioritized around where the dangerous streets were. The rail trail project was funded and received its master plan. 13 bikeways have been completed since Vision Zero was adopted. Dedicated sidewalk and infill traffic calming programs that did not exist now do. And we created a pavement surface friction program to address the high number of wet weather crashes. New city design details have been adopted, so that we are no longer having to go back and retrofit streets that are built now. So, a street that's built now will be built safe from day one. We will not have to go back and retrofit it in 20 years. And then, future projects that are under grant funding currently are an expanded traffic calming program, 15 more bikeways, and then major sidewalk infill projects. Little highlight of a couple of those, the city traffic calming program. Currently, there's five streets that we have done traffic calming on. We have three more scheduled in the queue that we are studying currently. And before the rest of the program, there was no dedicated effort to catalog, construct, evaluate any of this. These projects are primarily resident neighborhood-driven, meaning they originate with resident request. This is Carroll Street, which currently we're working on. It's currently in an interim configuration that we did to connect the bikeways ahead of some events, but you can see here what it's going to look like in the long term. This project is actually funded for most of this construction very soon. Other project successes you're seeing on the right, the larger image is College Avenue, recently completed in the last year. And then, to the left are Lake Street and Isabelle's, which are Lake Street and Isabella Street, which are two of our by far most used bikeways. If you go out there at any time, you'll see somebody on them. How we pay for it, this program is approximately 70 to 80% grant-funded, so vast majority of our fundings are coming from grants. Six bikeways grants, approximately $700,000 in value, fund this program. We have the one HSEP grant, and we're pursuing another one. That's the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is federal funds given to us through Maryland Department of Transportation. We currently have a grant from them for $225,000 for pedestrian signal improvements across the city, including some of our most requested intersections, like Main Street, Mount Herman, that area we call Six Points, Eastern Shore Drive, South Division, Snow Hill Road and Carroll, and Snow Hill Road and Main are being upgraded. And there's multiple pedestrian flashers in there as well around the schools, the elementary schools. We also were, this past year, awarded a USDOT inaugural round, it's the very first time they've ever done this grant, Safe Streets for All. We received nearly $12 million to implement the Vision Zero program. We are currently working on that agreement with them now. Since the adoption of Vision Zero Action Plan, we've had a nearly 70% success rate in our transportation grant applications, and a near 90% success rate in our safety grants. So, we are a leader in this field. And that concludes the presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have.
Okay. I do have one. What were the three streets that were the crash locations? You said there were three.
The original?
Yeah.
I will flip back real quick, so off the top of my head, I don't want to tell you wrong. The three streets for bike crashes?
Mm-hmm.
It was, it's Church, Isabella, and I believe that Maine, West Maine.
West Maine.
Yeah, it says green streets showing up on that image.
Okay.
Specifically, what carries West Maine there and that, to be specific, is actually the intersection of West Maine and Mill. That actually, that spikes that whole corridor up.
You mentioned that the entire state is seeing that uptick in crash. Do we know what's actually causing that?
There are dozens of theories, and no one knows for sure. This is even debated within our communities at our own conferences. There is a, the most likely explanations are one of the following two. One is, it's, most of it's COVID. It spiked the numbers in the last few years. One train of thought is people became more reckless during COVID. The other train of thought is the people that were on the roads. The other train of thought is with congestion gone, people were traveling faster, so less crashes were happening, but they were significantly more serious. So, there were less crashes, but the, don't quote me on the exact numbers, but the number of crashes that did occur that were injurious or fatal significantly increased.
Okay.
Because they had no congestion to stop them, so they were speeding way more. So, there's, those are your two train of thoughts of the big ones. The other thing that was happening nationally before COVID was people are just walking and biking more, and cars are getting heavier. So, the weight of the car impacting the human body does have that effect. As cars get bigger and heavier, when they hit a human, they're just going to, more likely to cause more injury. So, we've got to kind of stop that before it happens.
Well, I appreciate this presentation. It was really eye-opening to see the level of work that you guys have committed to these last few years, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think the number one complaint I always hear is, especially in the city, everyone's, everyone's traveling too fast or going too fast, and then we put all these things in, and we slow the traffic down, and there's a lot of complaints about that. But I think that the city can never compromise on safety. You may have a speed bump. It may be inconvenient to you. It may be that. It may be the other. But it slows traffic down, and I think it's commendable. I think we're doing a great job within the city, and I cannot wait till Carroll Street gets its full design on, so people can see and understand how that truly is going to look.
Even with the bike lanes, I hear a lot. I definitely hear a lot. But what I do try to explain to the residents and the constituents is that, just as we have lanes for our cars, we have crosswalks for our pedestrians, there are bike lanes for the bikers. Even if we only have 10 in the city, we have to keep everybody safe. Everyone has to be safe. It's a safety mechanism. I know that people think that, oh, well, they've been riding like this for years and nothing's ever happened. That's not true. Things have happened, and people have been hit. People have been killed on bicycles as much as scooters and some other things. So, we must look at the whole picture, and must look at the picture as far as safety is concerned. We have to make sure everybody is safe, as safe as they possibly be, especially with the motor vehicles. And I can verify that people drive aggressive. They're very aggressive now, and it seems like it's gotten even worse here lately, where people just drive like they don't care whether their kids live here or their family lives here or not. They just fly through your communities. So, just think about safety.
A perfect example to that corollary, West Road, where we just completed the protective bikeway on West Road. That project was reprioritized. It was not originally at the top of the queue after a crash that was fatal in 2020, where an individual was overtaken between Manoa and Booth by a car. Had the protected bike lane we have in now existed at the time, that individual will most likely still be here.
Are there any plans to, sorry, Michelle, were you gonna?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask about, you know, Main Street is one of those, you know, red lines. There's the top red line there. And, you know, that intersection, that five-point intersection of Truitt and Main, I had heard some talk about there being a circle being put in there. What's up with that?
So, there's two projects happening concurrently there. We have a feasibility study that we are working to get kicked off in coordination with Salisbury, Wycomico, NPO for Roundabout at that location.
Right.
Which will solve that problem and its operational issues. Additionally, there is a TAP bikeways grant that we were awarded a couple of years ago, so Transportation Alternative Program Grant for Design of Bikeways. That project is nearing kickoff. Main Street is on that, so it will get its traffic calming design done during that period. It is then intended to be built under the 12-point, or excuse me, the $12 million project that we have going on with, we're working on the grant agreement for USDOT. So, there's three projects stacked up on that corridor that we're.
Yeah, my neighbor, my neighbor, actually, she's very avid. She's part of the bicycle and pedestrian. She's actually a city employee, and she got struck by a car, and she's a runner, so she uses bike lanes for that. And she was struck by a car, and, you know, had we had those protections in place, I'm not sure that would have happened.
In the interim, the HSEP project that I had spoken of will improve that, because we're obviously a few years out from a Roundabout being built, probably five, three to five years. The HSEP grant that we have is intended to come out about the next nine months. So, we'll actually be having PED signals constructed there within the FY most likely that will get us through a lot of these intersections until they're better designed.
Especially since there's kids coming through there all the time from YMiddle, YHigh. That's a very busy, you know, frequently walked intersection. So, I'm glad. Good to hear that. I'm sorry, Megan. Go ahead.
No, you're fine. My question was just to, curious about where the next steps are for this. How are you all working to kind of communicate this to the broader community?
So, we are still actively working on redressing our communications. We do have, and we're going to, we're working on getting it advertised better. For every major project, we actually do create a website, a project website, and we post it. If you go to the Department of Infrastructure and Development page, there is a link that'll take you to project-specific websites. We're going to push it out more. Typically, we do, but it's kind of a press release goes out, and then people forget about it. And there's usually a survey at the bottom of those, especially ones that are grant-funded, because we're required to have that option. So, we will continue to do that. We are also available for calls at any time, and we are currently working on a social media campaign of sorts that will reach people, we hope, better.
That would truly help.
Thank you.
And again, most of this is done with grants. And yes, it's your tax dollars, and we're bringing all your tax dollars right back to Salisbury and improving Salisbury directly. So, the millions of dollars that are going into our streets to make them safer is impressive.
Thank you, Will. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Will.
All right. Next, this is going to be Administration and Council comments. Turn it over to, who's, Tom, are you doing this tonight, or we got, I see Jack.
Jack.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some comments I'd like to make. First, congratulations to Bill Garrett, and that's a tremendous, you know, as we all know, An Street Village is transitional housing. It's not permanent housing. And this will, this will allow and give tools to those people who are there to get a job quicker possibly, and then move through to give more room for the people who are still homeless. So, I think this is a prime example of what the actual project is supposed to do. So, Bill, thank you for that. Next up, I appreciated Will's comments. I will add one thing to it. I think part of the issue that we've had, and I've discussed this with the administration and also with the ID, part of the problem we have is partial projects that are not completed. And under my direction, I've given them the task of not starting a new project until the project, the current projects are finished. So, the goals and the priorities of those will be handled in order. And if I'm not mistaken, and Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Tarrell Street is number one, and Waverly is number two, or vice versa. But those will be completed so that we see the picture that was up there. I think if we had done a better job showing that and publicizing that to the public, we would have less comments about the craziness of the lines and why they are where they are, et cetera. So, we will work on Carroll Street and Waverly Street and finish those projects. And Will is right. We will then take them in order of priority based on the statistics, and that's how we're going to handle things going forward. Is that correct, Andy? Just make sure that I'm correct.
That's correct. Those are the projects we have. And just to echo part of that presentation, we are a trailblazer in this. The state is following after us. We are being asked to go to several conferences. What we are doing is what the state and the federal government wants to see happen. So, continuing down this path is good for us, because we are following along with where the state and the federal government wants us to be. So, I applaud council for continuing to move these projects forward.
Thank you, Andy. I have two more things. One, obviously, is my normal appeal for blood donation. We are still in a critical area. We are not out of the woods yet. We're very lucky that we've managed to maintain the necessary blood that we need, but we need to improve that. So, if you're available, please give blood. And I'm sure Angela will come and give you some more details. The last thing, two more things. One, we've done a great job so far this year with our children and taking care of our kids who are out there on the streets. And let's continue to be aware of the fact that there are all the little ones out there running around, and sometimes they get rambunctious. So, we have to be on our best behaviors. So, I'd appreciate it if you would do that. I would also like to thank the Field Ops team for their work during, you know, we take things for granted. We've had a lot of rain. We've had a lot of flooded streets, and those guys go out there and handle it with no problems. And I want to thank the Field Ops team for their hard work. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I will be getting off of this call for the closed session according to our rules. We are not allowed to participate, so Andy and I will not be taking part in the closed session, and that's why Tom is there. So, I hope everybody has a good week, and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
All right. Next up is council comments. I want to go the other way this time, so I'll start with Megan.
Oh, wow. Exciting. So, this weekend, I actually had a really lovely experience with Councilwoman Jackson. The two of us went out to the Community Prayer Vigil and Peace Walk down at the Wesley Temple United Methodist Church. And I just have to say that it was a wonderful experience and something that it's going to carry with me well beyond the rest of this year, to see such a strong turnout from the community, not just from those in that district, but from across Wycomico and from across Salisbury. And I just want to resonate with some of the messaging that was said that night, which is, we have to continue this conversation. We have to keep our kids safe, and I hope that this is just the start. So, I hope when all of you all see that these events are happening in the community, please come out, because it's going to take this whole village, this whole community, to really address some of the issues we're having here with violence in our community.
Wait.
Yes, a couple, a couple things. Could we, on the city website, or Facebook, I mean, or Facebook page, can we repost the plastic bag band ordinance? I am overrun by the city's collecting a 10-cent plastic bag tax or brown bag tax. We are not collecting that money. It's not a tax, we don't impose it. That's, the stores do that, and we have nothing to do with that. And I think if we could just repost it and just remind people, or they can look at the ordinance and see exactly what it, what it actually says. Also, you know, I think it'd be great to put the Vision Zero plan on there as well. A lot of people do ask about the traffic calming more than anything else, so that'd be nice for them to see the purpose of that and understand, understand that. At some point, can we put the bird, the bird scooters on the agenda, just to have a discussion about? I get a lot of emails and calls and comments about the bird scooters, often left in the walkways. It's hard for people to, if they're in a wheelchair or walking, or they have a stroller, and I just want to have a discussion about those, if we could put those on a work agenda at some point. And yes, I do want to reiterate the fact that donating a pint of blood could save three lives. Please donate blood. If you're healthy enough, you know, be thankful that you are healthy enough to donate blood and make that appointment at the, it's a more of a blood bank. Also, consider being an organ donor. You could, everybody knows how to Google, Google organ donor, organ donation, state of Maryland, and it has all the information in there that you could do with that. So consider those two items. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jackson?
Oh, I had a very exciting weekend. I'm busy. My senior citizen cookout was a great success. We had over 200 seniors. We had an awesome time, and I planned on doing it again next summer. If, like the people say, if the Lord's willing and the creek doesn't rise, if I'm still here and moving. But it was awesome. We just had a great time. The fellowshipping was awesome. And I will be doing, like I said, I'll be doing it again. The prayer vigil last night was awesome, but there must be continuous work. There's continuous work to be done in our communities. You know, prayer vigil was fine, but we must implement resources and programs for our families and our children. I have one program that I am implementing through my organization, Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities, and that stand-up speak-out, I'm looking for a building, but I'm also looking for donations for the young people to go on field trips. I'm planning to take one this summer for the kids, it's summer fun for the children. They need to go somewhere, they need to be active, they need to know that somebody cares about them. And that summer field trip to Kellins Pond is what I want to do for them. I also have other educational trips that will be taken throughout, throughout the year. And those donations will help, greatly help. I can't, I won't give you my Cash App number, but I will let you, I will give you my phone number if you would like to give a donation. My number is 410-726-8478. If you would like to donate towards this cause, please do. And we will be having meetings with our youth to get them to speak out. They need to tell us what they need. It's not all about what we want for them, we need to know what the need is from them as well. I also want to bring up something as far as 617 West Isabella Street. That land was donated by the family of the former councilwoman, Gertrude Shockley. I'm still hearing, not hearing what I want to hear, not hearing anything at all, but I still want to know if that, part of that land is going to be used for a memorial for Ms. Gertrude Shockley. She was our very first African-American and a female on the city council, so we do owe her that tribute, to have that memorial garden and a little bench and a plaque in her honor. So I'm still waiting to hear from, I guess, Phil Ops and the city on what we're going to do with that. So with all that being said, I've had a great weekend. I have been very busy. I have been with Megan on that yesterday, which was awesome, and I want us to continue to work and work hard in our city. And there was people from other counties, other cities, my other municipality that were present yesterday. People are concerned, and people want to make things right with our young people. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, April. Mrs. Gregory?
Sure, I just wanted to highlight that the Wycomico County Health Department is hosting a food pantry drive for the month of July. It's slipped by me, but I just noticed this the other day. They've got a food pantry drive going from July 1st to the 31st, and it's through the Wycomico partnerships for families and children. So this is, this is food that will be provided to kids that may not have enough at home. So the drop-off locations are here in the Government Office Building and then at the Civic Center. So if you have canned goods or non-perishables that you'd be willing to donate or want to go out and go shopping and pick up some, so to make sure that the kids in Wycomico County are fed, then that would be the thing to do. You can check out their Facebook page, the Health Department's Facebook page, and they've shared that information there.
Thank you very much. I don't have any comments this evening.
I do, I have another one. I'm sorry. When, as I did my walk yesterday, I noticed that a lot of our parks are closed in our community. They have become not safe havens, but havens for trouble. I'm asking that the county, please open up our parks and playgrounds again, so our kids will be safe. We're not asking you to babysit our children, we're asking you to save our children. I remember when we used to have playground directors who were schoolteachers, summer jobs for the schoolteachers. It doesn't cost much, they already have the credentials to do everything that you need them to do. Our kids have nowhere to go when parents are working, and this is how our children get in mischief, because there's no guidance at all. We need our parks and playgrounds back open during the day. We don't need these big, massive, go around to each park and do a thing. We need our money implemented in our community. Let it stay in our community. We need safe communities for our children and our families, and it starts with our parks. So I'm asking that the city and the county come together and do something to open up our parks again for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the work session is adjourned. I will entertain a motion to convene in closed session.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Can you read what you're going in closed session for, please?
At this time, the Salisbury City Council will entertain, well, we did entertain a vote, and we voted to move into closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter under the authority of the Maryland Open Meetings Law, annotated code of Maryland General Provisions, Article 3-305B7. And we are now in closed session.
See you, Lynn.
Can you read number eight, too?
Pardon?
Can you read number eight, too?
Number eight? Oh. Oh, that, I was reading the notice. That's what I was reading on.
Legal matter for annexation or pending or potential litigation.
Okay. So we are consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation and annexation and pending or potential litigation, what I just said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all open, right?